Good evening, I called order this June 15th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and asked the city secretary to call the roll.
Councilmember Light?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bessie?
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Adams?
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Thank you very much, would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and would you join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, our Sergeant at Arms tonight is Lieutenant Krista Long, Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight, may we have the first item, please?
Resolution honoring Arts for Art's Sake, the AFIS Group. Whereas, the AFIS Group is a volunteer-based 501(c)(3) whose mission is to build, educate, and celebrate community through art, and whereas, the AFIS Group produces special events and programs such as Arts on Sunday in the Downtown Arts District which are free to the public, designed to further the creation and enjoyment of art at the local level, and whereas, the AFIS Group provides student scholarships, artist mentoring, and supports the development of new and emerging artists throughout the community, and whereas, the AFIS Group operates the Red Dog Gallery which showcases the work of a consortium of talented local artists who sell their rich paintings, pottery, jewelry, sculpture, and many other handcrafted items, and whereas, the AFIS Group operates the Unleashed Arts Center, a special initiative to foster an appreciation of art and to encourage the development of artists in our community by providing a venue for art exhibits, creative workshops, professional seminars, community outreach, youth programs, and artist demonstrations, and whereas, the AFIS Group continues to implement its Public Art Initiative which displays art in public areas such as wall murals, outdoor art galleries, whistically painted mannequins, and the recently completed Gateway Arch on Sixth Street that provides a dramatic entrance to the Downtown Arts District, and whereas, the AFIS Group recently completed the city's first art-themed park, Activity on the Green, located on a half-acre site on North Liberty Street between Wake Forest Innovation Quarter and the Downtown Arts District. This new and innovative park which cost $2 million was paid for with private funds from the Thomas J. Reagan Jr. Foundation and was built entirely by local contractors. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem hereby express their sincere appreciation to the AFIS Group for all of their contributions to further the reputation of the city of Winston-Salem as the city of arts and innovation and wish them much success in their future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the Winston-Salem City Council and a copy furnished to the AFIS Group.
Your motion.
Motion.
Motion second, I'll favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, that's unanimous, when I ask the Harry and Ab and the board members from the AFIS Group here to come forward and I ask Councilmember Montgomery from the East Ward where this project's located to come join me.
On behalf of the city council and the members of the public, we just want to say how much we appreciate these wonderful contributions to our city, clearly make our downtown and the whole city a much, much better place, and thanks to you and to the foundation for this wonderful gift to our city. I know Councilmember Montgomery and I are there for the ribbon cutting and we said it was a great birthday present for the city of Winston-Salem, so behalf of the city, thank you very much.
On behalf of the AFIS Group, I want to say thank you to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, ladies and gentlemen of the council, as well as Lee Garrity and his team and city hall staff who has been supporting us behind the scenes and all the crazy things we come up with like mannequins that's never been done before, and art towers, and now the archway, and we could have done that without, first of all, the group, but also the support of you folks, you've been behind us all along, and we continue to keep growing, and we continue to come up with new wacky ideas to improve the city and our community, which is the most important thing. I just want, I don't know if you've been down to the park last month, but it makes people's hearts flutter when you see families walking up Liberty Street, hand in hand, and walking into that park, and the experiences they're having with the mist, children running, parents running, I mean, it brings the community together, we have new plans for the park too, additional plans, and it's going to be a mainstay for a tourist attraction, but also for the community that lives here to experience it every day, and it's there for them, and that's what our mission was, and we intend to continue following the mission, so with you continued support, we're going to keep going. So, and on that, I'm going to say all the AFIS Group, not in our shades because the Red Dog wears glasses. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nav and members of the board, Councilmember Burke?
Yes, I was going to say some years, Mr. Page and Mr. Grant and I, we went to Charlotte to look at the public art, and what you're doing, some of the things that we were talking about make our parks attractive, it makes tourists feel good, and it brings family and people together. Thank you.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Just again, just say salute AFIS and the hard work that you all have done consistently in community, as we look at our arts districts in downtown, but the work that you all do is not just for downtown, but it really impacts people across our entire city, and because of that, we say thank you, and really in terms of what we see with the new art park downtown, Activity on the Green, I think it's an amazing opportunity for us to continue to take pages from that book, how we continue to move in an area that had not seen great investment and development in some time, and I believe that Activity on the Green is leading the way in that portion of downtown, and I think there's opportunities for us to look at other parts of our community, how we use art to continue to blur the lines that have for so long consistently been barriers for us, I think art is one of the ways that we can use to help tear down some of those walls, so I'm liking what I'm seeing so far, and I think the future's bright, so that's another reason to keep those shades on.
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you again. May we have the next item, please?
City Stars Presentation.
We always look forward to this each month, and Chantel Davis, head of this project, come forward.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council, as always, an honor and a pleasure to stand before you and spotlight the excellent customer service that city employees are providing. Tonight, we're going to celebrate our first quarter winner of the City Stars of Excellence in the Wow category, we did not have a consistent winner this time, I'd like to take a few minutes just to tell you a bit about what our winner, our Wow winner, did to receive her award and then give her an opportunity to speak if she chooses to do so, and then allow her to come around so each one of you can congratulate her. Tonight, we are honoring Officer Sheena Nelson, I didn't know you were there. Officer Sheena Nelson is a school resource officer at Reynolds High School. Back in January, a fire destroyed the Kaleha family home, displacing all nine members, two adults and seven children, and leaving them with no personal belongings. One of the children happened to be a student at RJ Reynolds High School for whom Officer Nelson met while serving for many years as the school's resource officer. After hearing about the incident, she took it upon herself to seek out donations for clothing, housewares, furniture, and even money to help get the family back on their feet. She even donated funds of her own and time to actually take the high schooler out shopping to get clothes herself. She also used many days off to deliver items that the family needed. Officer Nelson truly went above and beyond to ensure that the Kaleha family received everything that they needed to resume normal life after this unfortunate event. Thank you so much, Officer Nelson, for providing the Kaleha family with a Wow customer service experience. I just want to thank each and every one of you for this award, and it really does mean a lot, and I'm very grateful for it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd allow me, just a few more moments, there was one more thing that I wanted to let you all know. Effective August, I will be coming to the end of my three-year term as the Service Excellence Coordinator. I've been on the team since inception, I really believe in this program, and I believe that it has worked wonders in our city, it's been a pleasure, I thoroughly enjoyed it, but the way we designed the program, it was to give other people the opportunity that I have had thus far, and so this, tonight is a little bittersweet, but I will be stepping aside in August and I will be leaving the initiative in Bernetta Devane's very capable hands, I know that you all know her very well, come on up there, you all know her very well, and I know that you will continue to support and encourage her and the team just as you've done me for so many years. You want to say anything?
I'm excited to take this role on, I am very proud of the service that I provide my citizens, the citizens, and other employees here with the city of Winston-Salem, so to give this momentum now, I'm really excited about taking this on, and I hope that I have everyone's support, and I intend to do a very good job, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all so much.
Thank you, and I'm sure, I speak for the councilmembers, I may still make one say, but to Ms. Davis, thank you for your leadership in getting this program underway, it's been, I think that's a great one for our city, and really showcasing the great set of employees that we have that provide services to our citizens. All right, great, thank you very much. Councilmembers, before I go right into the agenda, I do want to just call attention to a special event that's coming up on June 25th, I sent out a little note to you that Winston-Salem actually has the honor of having the oldest living person in North Carolina living here in Winston-Salem, Sheena Joyner Hayes will turn 114 on June 25th, and we're having a little birthday party for her at 10 o'clock over at Brookridge Retirement Community Center, and certainly, all the members of the public are invited to come by and wish the best to Ms. Hayes, it's a great honor for us to have her in our city, and it shows what a great place Winston-Salem is to live. So, it's a nice agenda, the city council is comprised of two parts, so I'm sorry, Councilmember Bessie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ray.
I'm sorry.
This is a bit less formal, but it's quite timely, of course, we appreciate the great work that Officer Nelson did, I just wanted to take a quick point of personal privilege and note that in the very early morning hours on Sunday, there was a serious apartment fire in the Southwest Ward, Weatherwood Court, if you see that building now, you can see the huge hole in the roof in the middle of it, and of course, it's, the building's completely unusable, there were 29 people, you know, 20 adults, nine children displaced by that, but fortunately, no one lost their life. There were six people injured, I think one is still in the hospital, two of the folks that were injured were Winston-Salem officers, firefighter, Captain Eddie Forrest, and police officer, Officer Kevin Neff. I want to give my personal thanks, and on behalf of the people of Southwest Ward, to all the firefighters and officers who responded to that fire and brought it under control, kept it from spreading, particularly want to thank the two officers who were injured, and I would note that, we'll probably be hearing more about, if not, other people from that incident, perhaps there will be, but at least about Officer Neff, I understand that he arrived early at the scene, he went door to door, you know, banging on doors and helping people get out in time, and he, you know, had to go to the hospital after that, so thank you, Officer Neff, thank you, Captain Forrest, and thank you to all the firefighters and officers who were involved in helping to protect our people that night.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Bessie, as the wonderful testimony, again to city employees, thank you. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda. The consent agenda has been unanimously, items on the consent agenda have been unanimously approved by a committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless the councilmember so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed again tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of our past meetings are always available online at the city's website, and just go on to the city government menu and click on the watch meetings online option. Councilmembers, are there any items from the consent agenda you wish to approve?
There are no items to be pulled, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda, I'll favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Now, as this next order of business, the city council will consider the proposed budget, starting with a public hearing. When this public hearing is called, persons in the council chamber will be given the opportunity to speak on our budget, at which time we request that you would come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. After hearing from every person who wishes to speak, the public hearing will be closed, and the city council will consider each budget items. Of course, councilmembers have been furnished with a detailed staff report which provides information on all the items being considered tonight. Before we do the public hearing, I was going to ask our budget director, Mr. Minor, if he would just give us a very brief overview of the budget this year for the public.
More technology?
Yeah. Well, you can go through, I think that's-
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Pro Tem, Burke.
There you go.
I'm going to briefly walk through just the budget overview for the fiscal year 2015-2016 recommended budget. This budget consists of approximately $414.8 million as compared to fiscal year 2015, $507 million. The variance here is predominantly in the CIP, and also, we have an operational increase this year of approximately 1.9%, also a debt service decrease of 33.2%. The general fund budget is approximately $182.4 million, which is an increase of 1.7% as compared to fiscal year 2014-2015, and we have a recommended 2.5 cent increase in the property tax rate for debt service payments for voter-approved bonds. This budget also includes a recommended pay adjustment between 1.5% and 3%, and also a 1% market pay adjustment for all permanent employees, that includes full-time and part-time. This recommended budget also includes the addition of 11 positions while deleting four for net increase of seven positions. We have a 9% increase in water fees for large, high-volume users, 5% increase for sewer fees, and a $1.85 increase in monthly base charges, and that's adopted by the City-Council Utility Commission. Proposed fee increases include a $70 increase from $780 to $850 for sanitation department animal waste fee, and a new plan review fee to fund the electronic plan review solution in the amount of $200,000. We also have a landfill tipping fee increase, which is going to generate approximately $12,220. We have the finance committee recommended changes, these changes net total $61,890. And I'll just go down these, to highlight these, since this is new from our last meeting, we have Harry V.C.O.S. increased proposed contribution of $15,000 to bring the total contribution to a requested amount of $25,000. We have restored a contribution to Liberty East redevelopment to the fiscal year 2015 amount, which totals $31,150. Also, increased proposed contributions to Old Salem by 12%, and that's based on the occupancy tax receipts, the growth rate, so that's an increase of $12,440 for a total contribution of $116,070. Also, increased proposed contributions to Piedmont Triad Film Commission, again, by 12%, it's the growth rate of the occupancy tax receipts. This increases $3,300 to bring the total to $30,800. We're also restoring the contribution to Self-improvement Last forever self-program to the fiscal year 2015 amount, which, $10,000, and that's from the general fund, and we're reducing the general fund contingency appropriation by 10,000 in order to balance. You see the revenue sources here for these changes, again, we have an increase in the Housing Finance Assistance Fund appropriation of $46,150, and an increase in occupancy tax fund balance of $15,740. The next slide you see is our tax rate allocation, you see we have our total tax rate of $0.56, which is the increase of 2.5 cents voter-approved bond for the voter-approved bond referendum. Finally, we have our customer calls for municipal services, as this slide shows that despite our 2.5 cent tax increase, the city still ranks among the most affordable in the state for customers of municipal services.
Any questions, Mr. Minor? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is anyone who'd like to be heard on the city budget? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move to item G2, please.
Item G2, ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Winston-Salem City Code relating to building regulations.
I'd recognize Councilmember Clark?
Yes, while it is one budget, there are actually nine different resolutions I will be making tonight because we have to vote on certain things separate from others, so I'll just move through them and we'll do them one at a time. concerning G2, I move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Winston-Salem City Code relating to building regulations, the building permit fee based on total cost and a plan review fee for inspections for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2015-16.
Second.
Motion second, need a discussion. Not on favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, no, that's unanimous. Item G3, councilmembers, there is a revised sheet at your place that simply, it's a little technical strike-through that we did on this particular item. Councilmember Clark?
On G3, I move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Winston-Salem City Code relating to garbage and trash fees for collection disposable waste from fish markets and animal hospitals for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2015-16.
Second.
Motion second, need a discussion. Not on favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, no, that's unanimous, thank you.
Item G4, annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance of the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2015-2016.
Councilmember Clark?
On G4, I move to approve the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2015-16, which sets the tax rate at $0.56 per 100 of assessed value, and a tax rate of 9 cents per $100 of assessed value for property owners within the Downtown Winston-Salem Business Improvement District.
Second.
Motion and second. Councilmember Taylor, the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, asks to make a comment about the public safety portion of the budget, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayors members of the council, I will try not to belabor the hour, I did want to give a very brief public safety highlight. Public safety, for those who are not familiar, consists of our police, our fire, and our emergency management departments, thank you to Chief Rowntree, Chief Mayo, and Mr. Mel Sadler who's in charge of our emergency management departments, along with the manager and our budget director, Trevor Minor, for their work on this budget. In other departments, we've seen some turnover due to some issues relating to pay with our police, our fire, and our emergency management departments. I'm excited about this budget, and I think at my colleagues as well, because it allows us to allocate a merit pay and a market-based pay adjustment, which will allow us to continue to attract and retain the brightest and the best public safety personnel here in the city of Winston-Salem. Very briefly, police budget highlights, this budget includes funding which in the amount of $203,000 for maintenance and storage costs for body cameras, we were some of the first in the nation to get all of our police officers who come in contact with the public body cameras, we'll see a net increase in funding for infrastructure and operating equipment, and this budget allows us to implement a full-year funding for the domestic violence officer grant position. On May 29th, we opened our local crime lab, I was very excited about that, this budget allows us to allocate $108,000 for our local crime lab. Local crime lab will help us to significantly reduce the turnaround time to get test results from the state lab, right now, we're seeing yearly backlog in cases. As far as the fire budget highlights, this budget allows us to add three additional full-time training safety officers who will be hired at the captain level position. Also, we'll see a 2.5% net increase for service expenditures and departmental supplies. Also, emergency management, revenue received from the North Carolina Department of Crime Control and Public Safety has been increased based on actual receipts from years 2014-2015. Lastly, the SOAR program, Successful Outcomes After Release, this budget allows us to increase funding to the Successful Outcomes After Release program, which works with folks in our community who have felonies and misdemeanors, those ex-offenders who've gotten the ship going in the right direction, and it allows us to hire them as employees, and also, it allows us to support in the form of grant money to community organizations that support the work. As Councilmember Burke always says, we can't put a price tag on safety, but I truly believe this budget allows us to support our public safety personnel at the same time increasing the services to our community, and we're doing it without raising taxes except for the voter-approved bonds in the form of 2.5 cents, so thank you, mayor, for the time, I just wanted to offer those public safety highlights.
Councilmember Taylor? Anyone else?
I made a statement in the meeting when we were going through the budget for public safety, I did make the statement, and I directed it to the city manager, we have 237,000 people in this city, when we talk about our public safety, it is important that the people who work for this city ought to mirror this city, if we talk about tourism and people coming to live in this city, and I would encourage the city manager to make sure that the chief of police, fire, emergency management does not have a big staff, and it's more diverse, I do believe, but when we talk about how well we get along and how many of the dollars we're spending for taxpayers when they pay their taxes, I feel that we have a lot to do to develop this public safety in a way that we will have the sensitivity that we need to have when people are working with individuals in the city. And also, we know a lot of people who work in public safety live outside of the city in the county, and if we're in the city of paying city, county, and city taxes, we would hope that they would like our city enough not only to work in it, but to live in it, and that was most important, for that to be documented and to be reminded and clearly for the record, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item 5?
Item G5, project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2015-2016.
Councilmember Clark?
On G5, I move to approve the project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2015-16. North Carolina for the fiscal year twenty fifteen sixteen.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item six?
Item G six, project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, federal housing funds, housing assistance, housing finance assistance fund.
Recognize Councilmember Clark, and then we'll also need to...
I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, because of Ms. Councilman Montgomery's relationship with the Bethesda Center, he needs to recuse himself for several items tonight, so for G six, I'll make a motion that will recuse Councilmember Montgomery from voting on this item.
Motion second to excuse Councilmember Montgomery from voting. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that's unanimous. Councilmember Montgomery, you're excused from voting on this item.
Now, I will make the motion on G six. I move to approve the federal housing and housing finance assistance funds project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year twenty fifteen sixteen.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that is unanimous. Seven in favor, and Councilmember Montgomery excused from voting. Thank you. Item seven?
Item G seven, resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal years twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-one as a financial planning guide.
Councilmember Clark?
On G seven, I move to approve a resolution approving the capital plan for the fiscal years twenty fifteen, sixteen through twenty twenty-one as a financial planning guide.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Councilmember Montgomery?
I would just simply ask Mr. City Manager if you would describe for the public exactly what this plan does, so people can be clear on what this entails.
Sure, Councilmember Montgomery. Every year, the city council adopts the capital improvement plan or program. It is a five-year plan where we look forward at the current year we're in, at the budget year for next year, and then for four more years, we try to predict and estimate what the capital needs are for the community and for the city of Winston-Salem. It is, though, just as we said, it's a plan. It does not lock the council in beyond the current budget year, but it helps us to predict and manage those future capital needs.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item eight?
Item G eight, resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County for grant funds to support the district attorney's domestic violence unit.
Councilmember Clark?
Concerning G eight, I move to approve a resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County for grant funds to support the district attorney's domestic violence unit.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
I would like to...
Councilmember Clark?
This one's a little different. I would like to comment on it. The city of Winston-Salem actually funds half a position in the district attorney's office, which is actually a state position to assist in the prosecution of folks that commit domestic violence, which is one of our very serious crimes that we have here in the city. So we're, I think, going above and beyond what we need to do in order to support this. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Item nine?
Item G nine, resolution amending the personnel resolution of the city of Winston-Salem, making changes to the pay plan and other policies.
Councilmember Clark?
On G nine, I move to approve an amendment to the personnel resolution establishing a probationary period, establishing a merit and market pay adjustment, changes to the play plans.
Both of them.
Harder than you think. An amending sick leave accrual is set forth in item G nine and amending article one through three of the city of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution is set forth in the same item.
Second.
Motion second. Councilmember Bestie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to call folks' attention to the sick leave accrual change. This change brings the sick leave accrual rates for firefighters, particularly who are assigned to twenty-four-hour shifts, up to actually correspond with their work days. I know that this is something that firefighters have been concerned about for some time, and I'm glad to see that we're able to get that done this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Montgomery?
Comment in reference to the change in the merit pay as well as market adjustment. On last year, this council took a step to set a floor for individuals within the city of Winston-Salem in terms of a pay, and that was set at ten dollars and ten cents, that individuals who come to work for the city of Winston-Salem, that that would be a floor. As we have a discussion in and around our community about what it means to earn a living wage and to earn a wage that is sustainable. As a community, as a city, we can't have that discussion if, as a city, we don't do what we're supposed to do to set that lead. But then also, what we see here now is making adjustments within the pay plan for individuals that work for the city and those who are able to see market adjustments. One thing I've stated since my time on council is when it comes to pay adjustments and merit increases for our staff, that we have a responsibility to make sure that we pay staff a wage that they deserve for the hard work that they give every day, at the same time balancing a dollar amount that is often restrained by the tax base in which we have. And this year, we have the opportunity to be able to provide this merit increase at the same time making a market adjustment, so that we can make sure that we continue to maintain great staff that work diligently and hard. And we all understand and know that with all of these things comes that same responsibility to consistently provide high-level and high-quality service to the citizens of Winston-Salem, which means that we're accountable to them. And so this means that we continue to be accountable to them moving forward. So again, I say thank you to staff, and then again, we look forward to accountability we have to the community we serve.
Great. Councilmember Burke?
Mayor, members of the council, for years, I've been talking about the salaries that we pay our employees, and for the record, tell us what's the lowest salary we're paying employees in this city.
Councilmember Burke, the minimum with the one-point-five percent rate adjustment to the minimums, the lowest-salaried employee would be at ten twenty-five an hour, which is a little over...
A little over.
Twenty thousand dollars a year.
Yes, mayor, members of the council, a little over twenty thousand dollars a year, even though I know we pay people for their capabilities. But some of the people we're paying, I cannot say it's just is so great, because some of the people we're paying are working on some of the hardest jobs in this city. Also, some of these same people have to work on not one job, but work on two jobs in order to meet the needs for their families. And I would say that whatever we need to do with people who are making the lowest salaries, that they will be trained in every opportunity that we get. We ought to try to move them into positions so this city can pay them, because the salary of twenty thousand dollars, a little over, is still not anything to brag about. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item ten?
Item G ten, resolution approving a cost-of-living adjustment for the city of Winston-Salem Police Officers Retirement System for fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Councilmember Clark?
I move to approve a resolution for a cost-of-living adjustment for the city of Winston-Salem Police Department's retirement system.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Clark, and members of the finance committee, as well as really all members of the city council for the hard work on this budget. What was not said in the presentation is that this budget was balanced with no tax increase, even though the city lost significant dollars from the state when they did away with our business privilege license, about two-point-three million dollars we lost. So congratulate the city staff for the hard work and filling out how to plug this budget and keep the services at or really above where they were and not having to raise taxes. So thanks to everyone. Thank you very much. The council will now consider the balance of the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. There's an item related to city participation and local improvements for private streets, an item related to emergency solutions grant application, grant funds, and sub-grantee agreements. There's an item amending the project budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty fourteen through fifteen. There's an item related to the financial assistance to the whole man ministries, an item making changes to the city council's meeting schedule, an item making recommendations for appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions, and then concluding with our public comment period. We'll have item G eleven, please.
Item G eleven, consideration of items relating to city participation and local improvements of private streets, recommended by finance and public works committees. A public hearing and resolution approving city participation in local improvements of private streets, Walnut Hollow Drive, and Walnut Hollow Court.
Councilmembers, I would call your attention to this revised resolution at your place, which in the last paragraph simply corrects the date of the public hearing to be tonight, June fifteenth. Before we do the public hearing, I was going to ask Assistant City Manager Greg Turner just to give us a brief comment about this work.
Mayor, members of the council, the city adopted a sliding scale for neighborhoods to pay the cost associated with bringing a road up to city standards if they weren't able to do so themselves. We have looked at this neighborhood, the Walnut Hollow development, under the council's adopted sliding scale. They qualify for participation by the city at the rate of ninety percent, where the neighborhood would be responsible for ten percent. The neighborhood would therefore have two requirements, and that is to dedicate the necessary right of way and to come up with and pay the city its ten percent, where the city would then put in the remaining ninety percent to make the pavement improvements necessary for the street to be up to city standards. After that time, the road would be accepted and maintained by the city at no cost other than taxes to the neighborhood.
We got any questions, Mr. Chair? Councilmember Burke?
Indirectly, how many streets we have like that in Winston-Salem?
Ms. Burke, there's probably, I'd say, a thousand or so different locations. I can't say that that's the number of streets, but there's probably a thousand different locations around the city where we have received requests to take private streets and make them public. We have over a thousand miles of public streets, but there are a number of locations that are private streets where citizens have asked us to evaluate them.
Right. Mayor, members of the council, those streets that we've had citizens to ask, I would like to see the list of them and what dates they ask us to do this particular something, because we have streets that have gone unattended for so many years, and we need to be fair across the board with this.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. A few individuals have signed up. First person is David Strauss, I believe it is. If you'd come forward, give your name and address for the record, and if you'd limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name's Dave Strauss. My address is one zero two seven Linger Road.
Good evening.
My wife and I bought a house in the Walnut Hollow neighborhood in nineteen ninety-four and lived there until two thousand and thirteen, when we moved to a new home. But we still have a... I kind of feel I have a vested interest in the neighborhood after living there that many years. When we moved in, the road was in pretty decent shape, although it was starting to fall apart then. The homeowners association at the time, we did do some repairs as best that we could, but they are rather expensive to do. Since then, because of some bad winters and icing and all, the road has pretty much fallen apart. I've got some pictures here from someplace I can show you, but mostly the road is not there anymore. It's mostly potholes, and the asphalt has pretty much washed away. Most of the potholes, some of them are up six to eight inches deep and three to four feet around, and some of the areas, the asphalt has been washed away across the entire section of the road. So pretty soon, there's not going to be any asphalt left there for these folks to drive now. It's going to be bad. Really appreciate it if you consider doing this for these folks and get the road fixed up for them.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. I moved into this neighborhood in two thousand and eight. I'd worked for the DOT for a long time. I just recently transferred jobs into TransHorse, which also assists with the working on your city trucks. To me, this neighborhood is a very nice neighborhood, and it's one of those that when I moved into it, it was the perfect place for my children. It was quiet. There was not a lot of cars that went up and down the street, and it was a place that they could go to play. Now that this road has started to deteriorate, not only have I had problems with destroying of cars, but my children cannot go out onto the roads to play, because they hurt themselves in the potholes. To be honest with you, I really love this neighborhood, and I really would like to see a lot of assistance and help getting this neighborhood fixed, because as the road is deteriorating, so is the neighborhood. And it's actually sad to see this go, as we had just heard you say about bringing art and beauty back to the city of Winston-Salem. This is something that I just can't understand, to keep going and persist like this. I mean, I don't really know what else to say, except for your assistance and approval would be greatly appreciated, and that's about the best way that I could leave it, is that we thank you for listening and taking the time tonight, and we hope that you'll approve.
Good. Mr. King, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Gregory Allen King, three oh five Walnut Hollow Court, Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. King.
You're welcome.
Jay Harper, four three three two Walnut Hollow Drive. Just for the project, I know you guys have a budget crisis going on. The road's never been touched by taxpayer dollars before. We have a nice neighborhood. We've never used any tax dollars on that road. I know you guys don't have money to spend like that, but it's a working-class neighborhood. I think it's worth the effort. Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard on this proposed project? All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This did come from finance and public works. Councilmember Bestie, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to move approval of the revised resolution in the package.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Taylor, please, is your...
Thank you. Mayor members of the council, this area is in the sensational southeast ward. I had an opportunity to meet with the residents before this meeting. As you can see, they're very concerned about the roads. I've had an opportunity to go out and drive it. You've seen the pictures. What we're seeing here, as you all know, is the product of an annexed area. It was annexed as a private road, and we all know in order to bring those roads up to standard, the community has to buy in, and the city maintains them going forward. I believe this is a no-brainer. The community, this is important to them, it's important to me, and as their representative, I'm speaking up to ask for support for this item. So, Mr. Mayor, have we already had a motion on the floor?
We did. I want to clarify that the motion was for A and B. Councilmember Bestie?
Yes, sir, as necessary.
Thank you.
I'd ask the members to support it.
Okay, very good. Councilmember McIntosh?
I just want to piggyback on what Councilmember Taylor said. I want to make it clear that if this were, if this development were being done today within the city limits, we wouldn't be running into this problem. The road would be required to be built to a higher standard, and we wouldn't have the maintenance issues that we have with this road, which was built prior to it being part of the city. So just, I would like citizens to know that we require builders and developers to build a quality road that we can then accept for maintenance. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Item twelve?
Item G twelve, resolution authorizing submission of emergency solutions grant application, acceptance of grant funds, and execution of sub-grantee agreements. Finance committee forwarded this item to council with two in favor and unopposed, one abstaining, and one excused. Recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Councilmembers, I'd entertain a motion to, again, excuse Councilmember Montgomery from this item.
So move.
Second.
Motion second to excuse Councilmember Montgomery. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Is there a motion on item twelve then? See?
On what?
On item twelve, it's a motion.
Yeah, he just made it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Bestie made a motion, so a second. Motion second. Discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Seven in favor and one excused. Councilmember Montgomery excused. Item thirteen?
Item thirteen, ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, Bethesda Center. Finance committee forwarded this item to council with three in favor and unopposed and one excused.
Again, I'd entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Montgomery from voting on this item.
So move.
Motion second. All in favor of the motion to excuse Councilmember Montgomery, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Councilmember Montgomery, you're excused. We now have an item, I mean, a motion on this item. Came from finance.[1772.45] Councilmember Clark?
I'll move approval of G13.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Again, seven in favor. Councilmember Montgomery excused. Item 14?
Item G14, Request for Financial Assistance for Whole Man Ministries. Finance Committee forwarded this item to council without a recommendation.
Mr. Brooks is here. Is there any questions for Mr. Brooks? There was additional information provided in a memo to the mayor and the council members. If not, is there, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Councilmember Adams?
I, I am for the intent of the project. I believe anything that we do to help veterans or anyone, families that are in need of decent and affordable houses, and particularly any development that goes on in the inner core. My only question or concern, mayor and council, is, again, the way that the process for this was done. This seems a little deja vu, and I thought we'd been down this road already, that we said, and we were directing, that this should never happen again, and here we are again at the crossroad. So, again, I'd just like to understand how we got to this point, so the public will know how we got to this point.
Mr. Brooks, you want to comment on the situation or how this transpired?
Being the mayor, members of the council?
Good evening.
The process would be for us to present to the city manager's office for your consideration, any project that exceeds $100,000. That is the policy. When this was done several, several months ago, in our haste to move forward with the project, it had been on hold for a long time, and we had gone through our regular process that we use in order to secure approval for funding through our regular rehab program, which in some instances can go up to $100,000. In our haste to move forward, I asked that this item be taken to the loan committee, so I take full responsibility for not adhering to the process. It was an error on our part. I don't know any more to tell you other than it was done without any intent of wrongdoing. It was simply to push a project forward that we thought was a very worthwhile project. So, I understand clearly what the process is, just was not adhered in this particular instance, and we will do our best to adhere going forward.
Any questions for Mr. Brooks? Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Oh, excuse us, Councilmember Burke?
Yes, I would like to know, how long will this project take before it's completed?
One house is about 85 percent completed, and the other house is about 70 percent completed, so we hope to wrap things up probably within the next 30 to 45 days, and it'll be ready for occupancy.
Mayor, members of the council, that I would encourage Mr. Brooks and whomever is responsible for looking at this particular project to make sure that it is finished and it's finished satisfactory. These are tax dollars, and I think when, as long as the project, it's been in northeast ward, I do believe, at one time, and it's been up there for a long time, and there were some complaints and concerns about completing the project. I feel the project has gone a long time myself, and so you say, how many days you say?
Thirty to 45 days.
Well, I would just say that, Mr. Brooks, it should come to a close as soon as it can be.
Look, Councilmember Adams, did you have another comment or something?
Yes, I do, and I guess that can come later, or maybe it was somewhere in here that I didn't see it. As to like, I guess the question should have been, what happens if the project owner is unable to pay the loan? I see it's a 15-year loan. I know it's only, what, $753 or something for 15 years. I see that they own the property, but, and according to the process, is it built in just like any other, that the city would be the owners of it if there's a default in the loan?
Absolutely. If the owners default on the loan, the city would foreclose and own the property. I can tell you, these properties are rehabbed to a very excellent standard. When you walk through, I think you would be very proud of what you would see in terms of the quality of work and the transformation from making them one-bedroom units to three-bedroom units. All of the volunteer agencies that have worked on the other units have commented on how pleased they are when they walk through that one unit that's practically completed. In the case of foreclosure, it would be my thought that the city would take possession of the properties, and I feel very assured that there would be no problem selling these units as single-family dwellings because what you have are two-three-bedroom, two-bath houses, and they, one is handicap accessible, so they're constructed for large families. So, I don't think that would be a problem, and the debt services on them would be very affordable for low and moderate-income individuals, as we had to make it affordable in this particular instance because you have a combination of not only community development block grant funds, but you have two other sources, or at least one, yeah, maybe two, but at least one other source of federal dollars combined with this, and the lead grant funds, which would be forgiven after three years, which is the model and the terms on all of the grant funds from the lead grant program. So, you have some of that debt that will be forgiven after a three-year period, as long as certain conditions are met, which would simply be to market to families with children under the age of six. So, that debt is going to drop at the, at the end of three period, at the end of three years. Also, the rent structure is based on the Section 8 rent structure, which, as you know, is a very modest rent structure for a unit of this type. So, I think in terms of the position the cities in with this, this project, I believe we're in very excellent condition.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Montgomery, then Councilmember McIntosh?
I don't have a question of Mr. Brooks on this. It's just your comment.
Yes.
In reference to the project overall. I don't disagree with any of the comments that was here tonight, or even in committee in reference to process in terms of how this is handled, and I think that's something I, Mr. City Manager, I believe you've heard very clearly from council on, and the comments that were made at committee level in the sense of what process should have been and consistently move forward with this project. But when we look at the project on its face and what is being, being done here, I think it is a great opportunity for that neighborhood and community to see an investment in properties that have been vacant for an extended period of time, properties there that had already been done by Whole Man Ministries, who worked pretty much from shoestring budget to pulling a lot of partners together in community, individuals volunteering their time to do work on a few of those properties that are there that are actually occupied now by individuals, and walking through those properties would be a place that I would personally feel comfortable being able to live in. And so, I think the standard and the quality that's there is absolutely great, and then the service that's being provided to that neighborhood and community is something that I think we can all be proud of moving forward. So, I don't think we can argue with the point of the benefit that's there. I think the only question we have is making sure moving forward, that processes are being followed properly and that we check those boxes in the right places.
Good. Councilmember McIntosh?
Yeah, I want to thank staff for doing a sensitive historic restoration on a project east of 52. I think there's an awful lot of housing stock and things, houses that are waiting to be restored in East Winston that often get ignored, and so I want to, want to thank you for that effort. I do think, though, that it was an expensive project for the size property was. I'd been through the houses before renovation, and I've been out there several times since to look at them. Great job, but I think that there probably is some expertise in the private sector that could be utilized to keep costs down. It, I sense that even with help from some other organizations and some donations that their, that costs probably got away, and I think it's worth reaching out to some private citizens to, to come in and maybe run, run the process maybe better, more efficiently than we do, but I do commend the effort, and I think they look great. I think they're really an excellent, an excellent re addition to the community.
I clearly understand your concern. However, we are in the process of working with a private developer on a similar type of project on Cherry Street. I think you're familiar with that, the Y staircase.
Right.
Staircase buildings, and the average cost on those units that we've gotten thus far have ranged from $75,000 to $126,000, and that would be converting them or repairing them to one-bedroom units. So, if you compare the cost of what you see in those units, which are very similar, I think in terms of being cost-efficient, we're pretty much in line with that particular project.
With that particular project.
So, there may be other historic projects that we're out of line with. That's the only one we would have a barometer to test.
I would agree with you on that.
But we clearly hear your concern, and we'll take that under consideration.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Burke?
Because I think when you look at that project over there on Cherry, it was questioned by, I think, one of our councilpeople about the amount of it.
That's right.
You know?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe it was our chairman of finance.
I think he did.
In fact.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
All right, item 15?
Item G15, Consideration of City Council's August and October Meeting Schedules.
Councilmembers, as you know, the National Black Theater Festival will be here this year, and as typical, we have either counseled or rescheduled that Monday meeting, so this item actually counsels the August 3 meeting in the city council, and then in October, we're very proud to host the North Carolina League of Nispalities Annual Conference here in Winston-Salem. So, the recommendation of the city manager is to not have meetings during the week of October 12, but have our committee meetings through October the 19th and 20th, and then move our city council meeting to October 26. Is there a motion on this recommendation?
So, move.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
We had the kickoff of the National Black Festival last week, and the people were asked to wear black and purple. I did not wear mine, and the executive director, Mrs. Hamlin, questioned us and cautioned us to make sure as many of us, many days, put on our black and purple. So, I promised her that I would wear mine on tonight to let everybody know that this city is really blessed to have the National Black Festival. They spend over $10 million. And as I said to the folks, the cash register's just clink-clink, and everybody downtown ought to support it, and they want you to know the tickets are on sale now, and please go on the internet to order your tickets. And, Mr. McIntosh, I did mention that the former councilwoman, Mertle, made sure that we had the beautiful baskets, and that is your task now. They should be hanging.
I second that.
So advised.
Thank you. All right, item G16. Councilmembers, there is a revised memo at your place. As you know, when I, we sent out to you for your review last week, there was a second page to the appointments there, and unfortunately, did not pick those up for the agenda booklet, so there are additional recommendations for appointments, so we'll go through those tonight without objections. So, if you'd go to item 16, please.
Item G16, Mayor Jones Recommendations for Appointments and Reappointments to Boards and Commissions. A, Citizens Police Review Board, all reappointments with terms expiring April 2017. Dr. Jonathan Epstein, Casey Leffwitch, and Robert Vorstedt.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion?
Discussion.
Uh, Councilmember Clark?
I don't have any concern about the folks here, but with recent events in the country, the, the concept of having citizen police review boards has been a prominent issue. We've had one for many, many years. I do not sit on the Public Safety Committee, so this may be information that some of y'all know that I don't, but, Lee, could we get a list of how many cases have come through this in the last couple of years? And maybe a sentence on each one? I don't need a lot of information. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you. Next item.
B, Police Officers Retirement Commission, Napoleon Richardson Appointment with a Term Expiring May 2017, and Otis Sterling Belton Jr. Reappointment with a Term Expiring April 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you.
C, Emergency Management Advisory Council, both appointments with terms expiring September 2016. Andrew T. Blackwell and Malin K. Dungra.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you.
D, Recreation and Parks Commission, Kenneth D. Kimber Sr. Appointment with a Term Expiring May 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you.
E, Downtown Business Financial, I'm sorry, Downtown Business Improvement District Advisory Committee, Financial Professional Representative and Non-Voting Category, Kenneth Steele, with a Term Expiring March 2018.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you.
F, Medical Review Board, Doreen L. Hughes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you.
G, Zoning Board of Adjustment, both appointments with Terms Expiring October 2017. Stephen W., Stephen C. Fowler, and Carol Naught.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, item 17?
Item G17, Public Comment Period.
This is an item, once per month, that the city council invites members of the public to address it on matters that are germane to the city government. We'd ask the individuals who would like to speak to come forward and give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Harold Day, please.
I forgot last week, tell you who I was, but I'm Harold Day, 1422 South Main. I personally like to thank the mayor and the council. We had a situation ruined at the stadium last couple of weeks, and the mayor took care of it with the help of Mr. Al. Parking tickets were over, done really bad over there. We don't even want to be treated like any public event going on in this city, other things, Corvina Plaza, Rib Fest, stuff like that. They wrote tickets on this, and Alan, the mayor, took a stand on it and took care of them. Another situation, we had no paper towels in the women's bathroom. None wasn't to be found. And my wife likes to have a paper towel to dry her hands on when she goes in the bathroom. We have a nice facility. Mr. Al couldn't get nobody's attention that night, and, but since then, we've had pretty good results on that, and I'd like to thank him for taking care of that. Another thing is, we got a PDF, I'm getting smart on this computer stuff, on the public hearing meetings about the sale of the Coliseum in the stadium. I know you don't want to hear that much anymore, but I had a group of citizens review that PDF. It wasn't all the meetings, it's just two of them and some phone-in calls. It's very disturbing. Back when all those meetings got over with, Ms. Wheellock got up here and told y'all, the general public said, "Sell them all." And that was her statement. We've looked it up on the internet. I got it. People know how to do that. For the Coliseum, 10 said yes, 12 said no, sell. But on the stadium, 8 said yes, 20 said no, sell. Now, I don't know if anybody in this council has looked at that PDF, it's the only written stuff left. Mr. Ralph says he can't find them. The sonographer has lost all the real tapes, chips, or dips, or whatever they are. But I'd like this council to review what is left that can be reviewed and make another decision on the stadium because that's too much one way to sell it. And I'm going to leave this paper here with Mr. Al, and he can review it sometime or another. Thank you all.
Thank you. Today. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Joanne Allen, P.O. Box 284, Winston-Salem 27102. I would just like some clarification, if possible. And I want to make sure, so when I'm out here speaking to the people on the street, that they understand exactly what you're telling the public as far as how you're actually running the city. I want to make sure that if anyone else, street or whatever, was annexed into the city, that they can also come before the city council, if they have a lot of potholes and everything as well, so that they can receive the same benefits as whatever it is that you all just did. And trust me, I believe in progress, but I also believe in doing things correctly as well. The second thing is this. If you give, if you change up your procedure for, and I'm looking at the one man, the whole, and I'm sorry, let me find it right quick, the Whole Man Ministries. Once again, and I know you all have heard this before, but my thing is this, if you're going to do it for one, I just want to make sure, so when I'm out here speaking, that I can tell all these other organizations to come before you as well, so that they can get their share of the pot as well, seeing that it's their tax-paying funds also. The last thing I like to talk about is this, is that as far as Bowman Gray Stadium and the Coliseum and all that, once again, I'm going to bring all this, tie it all in. And what I see is this, that once again, the city council, you pick and choose what it is that you want to do. Maybe not all of you, maybe some of you. But once again, if we're going to do things correctly, then we need to be even across the board on how we do business as a city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to be heard during public comment? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, if I can respond, I was actually on the, I think, chair of the Public Works Committee, maybe when we changed the street thing. Let me be sure something was understood about something done earlier. As Mr. Turner mentioned, there's almost a thousand miles of private roads in the city. And for those people to have their road paved, they're now going to be public roads. And I will tell you, there's some private roads in my ward that I have met with the folks on, and they've got potholes, but they don't want to make them public roads. So there's a trade-off. We do have a program, it's available for anybody, and Mr. Turner's going to get us a list of the folks, but there are people that have private roads that want to keep them private. And because they're private roads, not only do we not maintain them, we don't have the authority to maintain them because they're private. But if people want their roads to become city roads, we do have a program. And I think the most you pay is thirty percent, the least you pay is zero, though this happened to be ten percent, it is on a sliding scale. But bear in mind, not everybody wants it, and we have had some people say thank you, but no thank you.
Good. Counselor Montgomery.
Just as a city manager, in reference to how we deal with ticketing around events at Bowman Gray Stadium, I would just again reiterate the position that any events that take place at Bowman Gray, we will treat them exactly the same, and making sure that that is clear across the board. And any concessions that are done at any other time will be done across the board.
Counselor Burke.
Yes. Mayor, members of the council, and city manager in all, gathered here on this evening. I want to make an announcement concerning the newspaper this morning. There was an article, "Counter May Get Airport Requests," and I would like for the people in the northeast ward to read this article very carefully. It appears that somebody seems to think that the people who live in the area are not human beings with intelligence to have some input about what's going on as far as that tax rate. Now, some years back, and only one notice, when he was working here and assigned to assist me with my duties, is Allen Jones. And we met with the people in the area of Boyne Park, Castle Heights. And really what bothered me was this. The individuals who moved into Castle Heights in the 1950s, late 50s, 57, these individuals had struggled, and they made wages that was disgrace. But they still was able enough to get in a home and provide an opportunity for their children. And there was a man on the airport authority, I don't forget a thing, and this is what he said to another man, "Oh, those are just some little cracker boxes over there." I said, "They may be cracker boxes, but they're mansions to them, just like your home is important where you live, and you need to be ashamed of yourself." Now, here we go again, talking about the tax rate. And we have people who have made many sacrifices to build that neighborhood up, go back and see how many taxes been paid, and look at the beautiful homes, and with minorities not being able to make that much, but still to sacrifice working on two and three jobs. One example is my husband. When we went out there and went into a home before we were thirty, a stick house, my husband worked on two and three jobs, waiting tables, taking crap off of people, being jerked around by comments and remarks in the age that we were living. And I want to tell you, it's a shame those houses that are sitting on the runway where they're sitting. And I sent a letter, I want the people to know, I represent you, and I stand up for you for what's right. I sent a letter to that airport authority, and I said, "That's fine, by all the houses out there. How many of you want to live on that runway? I invite all of you to go to New Walker Town Road, turn left into Carver School Road, and then turn left into Teresa, and watch your car, it looks like you're going right to that." Now, I've said to the city manager and anyone else, now we need some backbone, and stand up, and the people in the area needs to be given some respect, and there needs to be some kind of meeting. Now, Mr. Mark Davidson, I believe that's his name, he emailed me, and I gave me some dates that he would like to meet with Mr. Marshall and I. And I gave him a date to meet on the 23rd, I do believe. And then you read the paper, it appears that people are already making plans about what they want to do, and wanting to get some money, I guess, to county commissioners. So I'm encouraging us, and even though I see a county commissioner says you don't have to, they don't have to have any meetings, I guess they're talking about them with elective officials. It is your responsibility, Mr. City Manager, to make sure that I'm well informed on what's going on. I have told the folks in this community years back, I don't care if it's a hundred thousand of you sitting on one side and there's only me on this side. What I feel needs to be done, I will work hard to get it done, and to be fair. Now, that's one thing I wanted to speak about.
Yes, ma'am.
The next thing I want to speak about happens to be when the governor was in town. Mr. Montgomery and I, we were there at the college, and I...
Taylor.
Pardon me, and I called you Mr. Montgomery that same day, and I was saying, because Mr. Montgomery represents that area, and Mr. Taylor shares it. Mr. Taylor and I, we were there. And I said to the governor in behalf of us here, that we understand the importance of infrastructure, and we also understand the importance of transportation. It is up to us to make sure those folks who represent us in Raleigh understands how important it is for them to work hard to put it on for a bond. And we need not pet them up. When election time come, you just need to let them know that they have not been doing some things to take care of the people that they represent here. That was the second. And the third thing I would like to say is that today, the creative corridors, people had their luncheon. I don't know how many of you attended, but we have people who partner with us, who try to make a difference, because what they're doing also with this bond will help better. And if we're to improve our city and want folks to come here and live, then we're going to have to make our city and for businesses to come. So I have pledged to do everything that I can do as elective official, and I hope the rest of you will do what you can do.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Burke. Counselor Light?
Thank you. A little difficult after that, and I'm with you, on board with you the whole way. I just wanted to address Ms. Allen's question about the private roads. Certainly, we have had cases where people have been annexed, neighborhoods have been annexed, and we have tried to help in those situations where they want us to take over the roads, but the neighborhoods were simply built so that if we used our standards, we would be running the road through the middle of their living rooms or whatever. So there are, in fact, those instances where we simply cannot help the neighborhood by taking over their roads. So that's just the point of information. And I do want to say that I was at the creative corridors today. It is so exciting. It is so exciting, the vision for some of the bridges. I want it to happen tomorrow. I mean, I don't think I can wait till 2018 or whatever. So it really, I think all of Winston-Salem will be so, so pleased with having something so iconic on our Business Forty corridor with these beautiful bridges and everything instead of the concrete thing. So at any rate, I just wanted to tell you, I'm really excited about it.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. At the time I wanted to speak, it was in reference to Ms. Allen's comments. Ms. Allen, you've got three responses to your comments. I felt the need to say something, because this area is in the southeast ward. As you've heard from Counselor Light and from Counselor Clark, every citizen does have the ability to participate in the program, normally somewhere around the 70, 30 part of things. But based on a sliding scale, the council came back and revisited the ordinance, and because of the sliding scale based on property values, this particular project came down at ninety percent to 10 percent. So it's not like we're just throwing 100% of city money into the game. This particular community has skin in the game. The city is coming in and putting in roughly $112,000, $113,000 in the community. It's putting in roughly $13,000 to the project. In the southeast ward, we were hit pretty hard with the annexation. There were a lot of rural areas that were brought into communities. So we're going back retroactively and trying to work with neighborhoods to get their streets raised up to public level so that we can maintain them going forward. And this was just one step in the process. As Counselor Light mentioned, some neighborhoods don't want to be a part of it for financial reasons, or just because they like the anonymity of having their own private streets. But for those who are interested in doing it, you can contact us. Most of my constituents have my cell phone number. You can call 311 at City Link, and we'll try to work to get your road up to private standards, and we'll maintain them going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.